I call the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District, meeting work session to order. Mr. Gainer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
We actually have two things, real quick, to take care of business-wise. One business, and then the other one Dan's going to present in a minute. But I need a motion to approve B1, a resolution authorizing the execution of the lease agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Explain what this is all about?
Yes. George, will you come up and just give us some further information?
Sir, this is a lease that we discussed on Saturday between us and Crestor Real Estate, where we're going to rent the warehouse space in Cleveland to store the middle school furniture. Their lease is going to be for two years, commencing upon your approval, and it'll be renewed next year for an additional year.
We had a lot of questions on Saturday, and we got a lot of good answers, and essentially it's a way of storing all the materials and stuff we have in the middle schools as economically as possible.
Right.
And timely, since we have to get this stuff out.
And as I said Saturday, I did approach both cities, communities, to try to look within our two communities, and that was unsuccessful. So I work in Cleveland.
I have two questions that came up as I was looking at this. The first one is how common is it for commercial leases to charge tenants a portion of landlord expenses?
I am being told by our attorney, very common.
Okay.
The entire lease was reviewed by...
They've all, I'm sure they've all looked at it, but it was just, it struck my curiosity is all. So if that's standard practice, no problem. And I was confused by the insurance clauses 12-2-4 and 12-2-5 because they seemed to be contradicting each other, but again, I assume...
I ran through our insurance company, and there's not an issue with it.
Okay. Thank you.
I will just point out that I have a very good friend who is in this business, and he was very impressed with the deal that we got on that space, so...
It was helpful. We had a University Heights resident that was helping us negotiate.
And I will say that actually he said that that gentleman is very well-respected in the field, so, good choice.
Any other thoughts, questions? Second?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
The other item is, this is Public Education Week, and Dan, you brought this to our attention, and it's a resolution that you shared with all of us.
Yes.
Go over that real quick.
This is, in fact, Public Education Week, and a proclamation has been assembled, and I will read it for the consideration of the board. It has quite a few whereas's. Whereas: Traditional public school districts in Ohio serve more than 1.8 million students and employ more than 245,000 Ohioans full-time, and: Whereas all children in Ohio should have access to the highest quality education possible, and: Whereas Ohio citizens recognize the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults, and: Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the Buckeye State, and: Whereas public education not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and: Whereas Ohio has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas public education is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective public schools. Therefore, we, the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education, do hereby recognize January 21st through 27th, 2018, as Public Education Week, and call this observance to the attention of all Ohioans.
Have a motion?
Thank you. I move to accept this proclamation.
Second?
I second.
You didn't sum it up.
Thank you.[328.12][328.12](Laughter).
Okay, Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Now we can get started.
Yes.
So Dr. Dixon, you want to make some introductions?
Thank you. Yeah, so tonight we have the city of Cleveland Heights going to do a presentation for us, and this presentation, this session rather, is for discussion, for us to talk through the opportunity they have for redevelopment in the city of Cleveland Heights. So we want to be able to answer questions and get clarifications on anything that you have about the pending project. So in this work session, it is set for us to work together and for you to walk away with all your questions answered. So we'll start by having our city manager, Tanisha Riley, just start and introduce her team.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. Good evening, President Posh, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Dixon, Treasurer Gainer, thank you for having us here tonight. We are pleased to be able to share this exciting project with you, and we look forward to this opportunity to have a really good discussion with you. As Dr. Dixon mentioned, I'm Tanisha Riley, the city manager for Cleveland Heights. I have with me this evening Tim Boland, who is our Economic Development Director, and Darren Kitner, who's the General Counsel at Flaherty &amp; Collins Properties, who has also Ryan Summers, the Managing Director of Financial Services with PMC LLC. So I'm going to kick us off this evening, and then I'm going to turn it over to Darren so that you can hear a little more about our development partners and some of the work that they've done and plan to do in our city. And then we'll conclude the presentation with the discussion of the tax increment financing proposal that we've submitted to you for your consideration. So I've kind of gone through this, just a bit, of what we plan to do tonight. I think we're all familiar with the site, but here's an aerial view of our beloved Top of the Hill site, which sits on parking lots located at the intersection of Cedar and Uklah Heights Boulevard in the Cedar Fairmount District. The orange boundary there that you see are all the city-owned properties for the site. So just a quick history, I've spent a little time before the meeting talking with Board Member Heinz, who is more acquainted with this site than I think maybe any of us are having been born there, and proposed to his wife there, and lots of connections, as I'm sure many of us who've been around the community for a while have connections there. So it has a storied history. The eight-story Edge Hill Apartment Building that you see on the right was constructed in 1913 and was converted to General Medical and Surgical Hospital in 1946. By 1955, Doctors Hospital was an accredited modern 200-bed hospital that eventually closed. The building was demolished by the city in 1968 and has pretty much been a parking lot ever since. There have been a few attempts to attract development to this site. The city received requests for proposals in 1972, however, none of those proposals received were accepted or led to development. In 1982, there was a second attempt where we issued an invitation for offers to redevelop the site, but that project was contingent on grant funding, which fell through. In 1990, the city again issued requests for proposals, but the project ran into financial issues and did not go forward. The recent attempt before now was in 2008, and I think we all know what happened in 2008. So that brings us to our most recent effort with the site. We took a little bit of a different approach in 2016 when we decided to revisit the potential redevelopment here. What we wanted to do was seek out the most qualified partner, a partner that had a track record and history of success with projects similar to what we would like to see at this site. We issued a request for qualifications, and after a little bit of time, developed a relationship and partnership with Flaherty &amp; Collins. We have since executed a memorandum of understanding with Flaherty &amp; Collins, which laid out the expectations for the development, and we now have a fully negotiated development agreement which outlines the terms for the project. We expect city council to take action on the development agreement in the next few weeks. So I'm going to go through some what's happening next, some future steps, and then I'm going to turn it over to Darren so you can hear a little more about Flaherty &amp; Collins, the work they do, and the project itself. So what's next? The Board of Education plays a really big role in this process, and that is one of the reasons we are here with you tonight, which is a culmination of talks about this project with district staff and former and current board members over the last several months. This slide outlines the timeline that we hope to move forward, which would result in a completed project by the third quarter of 2020. There are many steps boiled down to a few bullets, including detailed design, which will be subject to city approvals, and plenty of community input. And while we've been working hard on this project, and Tim has been working extremely hard with Darren and his team on this project for many, many months, there's certainly more heavy lifting yet to be done before construction commences. So I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to turn this over to Darren Kitner of Flaherty &amp; Collins, so you can hear directly from him and his company about his partners, and most importantly, the catalytic plans that we have in store for Top of the Hill. Darren?
(Coughs). Can you get it quicker?
Got it quicker.
Great. Thank you, Tanisha, and I want to echo Tanisha's opening remarks. Thank you for your time this evening, and we're excited for this project and look forward to working with you and hopefully answering any questions you have. I know this isn't, you know, something many of us, even in the real estate world, deal with, kind of day in, day out, so it's somewhat counterintuitive, but we're, you know, we're hopeful. After some time, we can show you the value of the project, not only to us, but to you as well. So as Tanisha mentioned, we're Flaherty &amp; Collins Properties, we're the lead developer here. We do have a local development partner, Liberty Development, and then our architect is Epcinew and out of Milwaukee, although they do have Cleveland experience, which is why we brought them on initially. A little bit about us, I won't go in too much now, except if there's any question you have on the company, I'd be happy to answer. And we're based in Indianapolis, Indiana, have approximately 500 employees. For the last two years, we've been ranked a top 50 national developer in the country. We focus almost exclusively on multifamily housing and urban infill housing with that, so the luxury multifamily developments that'll be mixed-use with retail, in this case, potentially a hotel, structured parking, all that. All of our projects, because of that, end up being public-private partnerships, and that's just merely a function of, you know, we're primarily focused in the Midwest, the rents in the Midwest aren't as high as they are on the coast, to keep up with the construction costs, especially when you have structured parking. So that leads to public-private partnerships with cities. We're pretty sure we do more of those than anyone in the country. It's not a category anyone tracks, any of the magazines or publications, but we have, as you can see there, we've done 23 of these types of projects, totaling over $2 billion development. We also do a lot of property management, both for ourselves as well as third parties, and you can see we're 17,000 units there. I think, I don't know if we have a slide that says it, but we're, you know, in a dozen or so different states, one of which, obviously, Ohio. We currently have five projects in Ohio itself, about 1,400 units and 35 employees. Historically, we've done 35 properties in Ohio in 11 different cities. I should have started off by saying that Flaherty &amp; Collins, you know, has been around for, I think next year is our 25-year anniversary, Dave Flaherty and Jerry Collins started the company, and back then it was kind of your, what we call your cornfield-type development. You go out and you buy some green fields, and you put in more garden-style, like apartment complexes, is what most people think of. And like I said, now though, our focus on the market rate side is on the urban infill development, which is more complicated, but more fun, too. I got some comparable projects that are, you know, around the Midwest. This is a property in Indianapolis that brought the first grocery to downtown Indianapolis in about 50 years, so 40,000 square feet of retail space, 336 apartments, and I use this as an example a lot when I'm talking to schools or people interested in the school aspect of it. This is 336 apartments, and we have one school-aged child in the entire property. Our projects are geared, we don't exclude anyone, but what we find, it's generally your millennials, young professionals out of school who look to live in these properties, or an increasing number of empty nesters, a couple whose kids have moved on, or they no longer want the big house or want to mow the yard, and they too, like the millennials, they want to kind of be in the action, walk to get coffee or to get something to eat and kind of hang out a little bit. So it's generally those two segments and not really much in between, so that's, you know, probably relevant here tonight. A project suburb of Chicago, again, similar style, you see a lot of these are similar concepts with the luxury housing and then the first-floor commercial space and always with structured parking. This is a suburb of Indianapolis that Tanisha and her team got to tour last year. So again, that's about 20,000 square feet of retail and 250 units. Kansas City project that we're finishing up this year, that we did deal with their Port Authority to develop an area on a river that had been struggling to be developed, so we worked with them to come up with this concept. Project in the suburb of Louisville, Kentucky, on the Indiana side, though, a little bit smaller scale than what we normally do, but it was a smaller community, so it was probably befitting for that area. And this is a Cincinnati project that we've done two phases. It was on the, I think, the nation's largest brownfield cleanup site, so that's kind of a unique aspect of that. And then this, the, again, the similar type concept, the unique feature here is that this was the first urban infill mixed-use development in the state of Indiana. So you're seeing these more and more, but you know, 10 years ago, you weren't seeing them. People were leaving urban areas, or it was kind of coming to the end of that, but you weren't seeing a lot of urban redevelopment. This was, again, the first of its type in Indiana. So fortunately now, we get to talk about the project that we all want to hear about. The current concept, and it's somewhat preliminary, fluid, but generally, it should fall around this sort of size and scale. 200-plus luxury apartment units, and again, those will be studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. 15,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the first floor. We are pursuing a boutique hotel here, probably in 100 to 120-room size, and then somewhere between 500 and 600 parking spaces in the garage, not only for our project, but to replace the 225 parking spaces that are there now to serve the district and ensure that the vitality of the whole district is preserved. And then, depending on kind of space limitations, if we're able to, we're going to try to fit in some townhomes and potentially some Class A office space. So total investment is between $75 and $80 million is what's projected at this time. And again, as we go through this process and the design is elevated and we get some public feedbacks, some of these things could shift a little bit, but generally, I don't think you'll see large deviations from this. There's a current concept plan, I think this was the one that we presented to the community in the fall, and as I started that off, I'll say it here. About the only thing I can tell you is it's probably not going to end up looking like or laid out like that once we get the feedback and the architects can get the survey and kind of understand kind of the topography and all that. This thing will change somewhat, but this is an initial kind of, let's lay it out and see how it could fit on here, and that was a first stab at it. But we're already working on trying to update and improve this, so we're not there yet, but this was, this is the most current one we have, but like I said, it's being worked on. So you see, on the point there would be the hotel, and then we got to work around the condo building that's there, and still try to fit a good-sized garage and get the retail and the apartments, so that's one way of laying it out. Then, kind of on the north end, you would see, north of Edwards there is potentially where we have townhomes and maybe a second apartment building, but again, it's very fluid at this point. All right, I will turn it over to Ryan to go through these projects.
I'm Ryan Summers, I'm project management consultant, and I'm here to support the Flaherty &amp; Collins team on the financing of the project. Before I go into projects, I just want to just state that we want to be fully transparent with any requests related to the financial structure, the proposed TIF, and share any numbers that you'd like to see. But here, we wanted to highlight several mixed-use projects. A number of these are very close to this site and very close to both communities. These are projects that are all either, that have been completed very recently or under construction. Each one of these required the support of a TIF, among other public civic funding incentives, but are also very impactful to the community in terms of revenues to the municipality, the school district, and job creation.
Quicker?
Nope, did I?
It said right there, sorry. See it?
The Van Aken site is a good comparable project in terms of a P3 that we work with the city of Shaker Heights, state of Ohio, Cuyahoga County, the Port Authority, and Ohio Department of Natural Resources. We had 10-plus sources in that project, it took many years to get that done, but that's very close to becoming a reality. Both American Greedings and Pine Crest in Orange Village had a significant TIF support. Centric is just down the hill from this project, and both Centric and One University Circle had support of a TIF from the city of Cleveland, among other incentives, and we worked on the Legacy Village Hyatt Place Hotel that had both a local, non-school and school participation in terms of the TIF millage, and we issued bonds through the Port Authority.
I'm not sure if, Tim, you want to go through these slides, then?
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, and I'd like to echo everyone else's comments, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening the Top of the Hill project. My name is Tim Boland, I'm the Economic Development Director. This slide that you see is, in general, the parcels that are owned by the city. The different shading corresponds to the property class with the Cuyahoga County Auditor's Office. The blue, which is the predominant color you see, is a commercial property class. The yellow is residential, and the pink is actually exempt. And what is the impact of that, and this is a lot of numbers on this slide, and I think you may have this in your proposal, but in general, what this shows is, you know, given that the current property tax, the property that comprises the Top of the Hill is valued at a land value of about $764, $600, the breakdown of property taxes, the school, as you know, schools get 70.5%, the county 12%, the city 9.5%, library 6%, and metro parks 2%. Those are at the bottom there. And what this, what this shows is that the property, and the example here is the 2016 taxes, the school portion from the parcels amounted to, in the lower right corner, a little over $21,000 for that year, and I think that's indicative of the amount of property tax revenue that the site produces as a surface parking lot owned by the city. So what we would appreciate your consideration of is a TIF proposal. As I mentioned, currently, the site yields about $21,000 annually to the school district. Our development partner, Flaherty &amp; Collins, is proposing to invest somewhere in the area of $75 to $80 million in our community. The TIF is an economic development tool, established in the Ohio Revised Code, it's utilized to create a flow of funds to finance development. It typically is referred to as service revenue. It's used for covering debt service on the project and its financing and school compensation. The TIF that we are proposing this evening would exempt the site from taxation 100% for 30 years, on the increase in the assessed valuation resulting from the improvements constructed by Flaherty &amp; Collins. And as the previous slide indicated, the current land value is about $764,000. That would be excluded from the TIF. Another aspect of the TIF would be that any increase in millage from future school levies after commencement of the TIF would go 100% to the school district. Flaherty &amp; Collins or an affiliate would make service payments in lieu of property taxes, and that, those payments would be on the increase in the assessed value resulting from the new improvements, and the estimated valuation of those improvements would be right around $43 million. Service payments are collected by the city, they're redistributed, first to cover debt service, and then to provide school compensation. Under this proposal, the schools would receive 25% of what would have been received if not for the TIF. So when looking at the TIF and when it's established, what would be the expected results? School district would receive approximately $421,000 annually. That's compared with $21,000 received annually under the current conditions as a parking lot. And the TIF would also create from service payments estimates of about $1.8 million annually, and that would be available to cover debt service. And according to the models that we've looked at for the project, they indicate that we need about $1.7 million in order to cover debt service. So it's, it is tight, but it does cash flow and it does cover debt service. Essentially, the TIF is really required for the development of this site. Without development, there is no ability to provide school compensation, and what we would anticipate, again, if the site is either developed in a non-catalytic way, or more likely, the site would be developed or would remain undeveloped. In its current state, and again, that would kick off about $21,000 a year into the future. This is a flow chart of the flow of funds from the TIF, and it is very difficult to read from where your vantage point is. I'll just, and I won't spend too much time on it, but I think this is included in the TIF proposal that you may have received, but just in general, the bubbles in the flow chart to the left kind of indicate the flow of funds for the site as it's currently valued and would continue to... of funds for the site as it's currently valued, and would continue to be taxed at the value of $764,000. And what that ultimately would yield would be somewhere in about the area of about $28,000 a year in taxes from the land value. So that would go to the schools. That is increased over the $21,000, because you might remember that one parcel was exempted. It would no longer be exempted under, if the TIF were to go through under this proposal. The bubbles to the right-hand side of the screen are based on the TIF being enacted. We're looking at about a $43 million valuation, about $2.2 million of service payment revenue annually. The school portion of that, about $1.57 million, non-school, about $658,000. 25% applied to that $1.5 million yield, it's about $393,000 a year. That plus the $28,000 is how we come up with the $421,000 in revenue to the schools each year. All the remaining funds would then be available for debt service, and that's about $1.8 million under our current estimates. So with that, I thank you, the team thanks you. We're certainly ready to answer any questions. I will leave that information up, my contact information, and also our website for the Top of the Hill for future reference. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I also acknowledge that we do have David.
I was just going to mention that, yeah, very quickly, for the board members who haven't met him yet, David Seed is our legal counsel with Brinson McIntyre and Seed. And he's been with us for many years and helped us through other TIF proposals, and also has worked on many TIF proposals throughout northeastern Ohio. So he is here as a resource to you to answer any questions you have as well.
Okay, so just sort of looking at from the top down here, I mean, this is, you've shared a lot more detailed information than we have in our packets. We understand that there's some negotiations that happen between our folks and your folks, and this is sort of where we, as a board, are getting involved, and we're being asked to make a decision on whether or not we move forward with this. Is that pretty much the state of this?
I think they are bringing, they're bringing, let me answer the question. I think the developer and the city are bringing together sort of an idea of a proposal to the school board. There's not been any negotiation, has not taken place yet. I think this is more of an introduction of the plan, the economics which have been discussed, and a, I guess, a first volley as to proposed compensation to the school board. What would occur in the coming weeks would be discussions that would take place, Scott and Mr. Boland and myself and others, to try to narrow out any differences, if there are any. I think the city and the developer would like to have a compensation agreement negotiated this quarter of the year, something that can be approved by the, by April 1st.
Or sooner.
Or sooner. But I think the, as of today, I don't think we've not had the give-and-take type of discussions that would involve the board, you know, your reactions to their proposal. And I don't know if Scott has anything.
Okay, so for as a matter of, like, public process, there's certain threshold where we need to get involved in this, and this is beyond that.
Let me, let me.
So I guess it would be helpful if you can just sort of go over for, you know, the public who's concerned and us, sort of where that threshold starts, you know, the 75 versus 100%, you know, 30-year. And it would be really great if we can just talk about in practice, at a very, very high level, that there is a precedent of doing this and other development efforts that have been brought forth to this, to this board.
Okay. Under Ohio law, a TIF, TIF is basically a tax diversion. It's not, it's, well, it's a tax exemption, it's really a tax diversion. A tax abatement, taxes, as we have in some residential properties in Cleveland Heights, you do not pay any taxes. With a TIF, taxes continue to be paid, they're paid to the county treasurer, however, taxes are diverted to the city for use to pay any compensation to the school board that's negotiated, and the remainder is used for the project, or goes back to the developer, the property owner. It's a, it's an economic development tool. Now, with a TIF, a TIF can be up to 30 years, and it can be up for 100% of the value of the property. Now, with a TIF, you continue to receive revenue on the property as it currently exists. So as Mr. Boland pointed out, the parking lots that land, we will continue, the school board will continue to receive 100% of the revenue it receives today. There's no loss of revenue, so to speak. I don't know, if you count the asphalt, there might be a minor loss of revenue that will be destroyed. But the TIF is capturing what's called an increment of value. The new construction, the value of that land that increases. And with that increment, over a 30-year period, I think, and they've shown you, they've given you a good example of the economics of the TIF, developer can use that money to pay debt service annually, that's one option, and maybe they can go explain further. They could actually go out and, go to a bank today and secure a loan using the TIF proceeds and borrow against it as an additional source of collateral. Now, school boards get involved in a couple ways. If the request for the time period of the TIF exceeds 10 years, school board approval is required. The TIF can go up to 30 years, so if you're going over 10 years, school board approval is required. If the percentage of the abatement, the exemption, exceeds 75% of the value of the property, school board approval is required. So a city, and it's the city that would authorize the TIF. The city can authorize the TIF for 10 years and 75% of the value of the property without school board approval. They could send you, they could send your superintendent and treasurer a letter stating that they're going to proceed with a 10-year, 75% TIF, and we would have no say in the matter. And 75% of the improvements would be exempt for 10 years. We would not receive revenue on 75% of the value of the property for 10 years.
Okay, I'm a little confused now. You said 10 years, 10 years we would, you need school board approval, right?
If it goes over 10 years.
If it goes over 10 years, okay, thank you.
Up to 10 years, school board approval is not required.
Okay.
Now, most projects today, developers look for as long a period as possible, in this case, up to the maximum 30 years, and they want the full value, the 100%, and will agree, and will negotiate compensation with the school board. That's the common pattern, and Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the common pattern we see in Ohio, is a 100, is a 30-year 100% TIF with a negotiated compensation package for the school board. You mentioned, yes, for a few examples. So let me finish up one thing with, one point on that. The key thing is, when the city comes to you asking for 30 years, 100%, the school board then has a few decisions to make. The school board can approve the proposal, the school board can disapprove the proposal. What most commonly happens is that the school board approves the proposal and negotiates a compensation agreement. But you do have the ability to disapprove or approve. Now, some other examples. Cedar Center is a TIF where for the first 10 years, the school board receives 25%. Remember, I mentioned, the city could proceed with a 75% exemption, leaving the school board with 25%. And then for the remaining 20 years, beyond the 10-year period, the school board is fully compensated, in the Cedar Center example. University Square, there's a 100% TIF in which the school board receives no revenue other than for new levies. However, the school board received a multimillion-dollar upfront payment initially when that project was developed. Couple more examples. Ryan and I are currently working on a project known as Flats East in the City of Cleveland, and with some variations, the Cleveland School Board receives 35% to 50% of the taxes, depending on which part of the project you're looking at. I worked on a project in the City of Kent, if you've been to Kent, in their new downtown, and that project is based on the school board receiving, I believe, 20, 20% to 30% of the revenue. However, the school board compensation increases as the value increases. And once the value reached the target value, and I believe in this example, it was 40-some million, was mentioned, in the Kent example, once it reached the target value, the school board received 100% of its revenue, if it ever reached that target value. There's other, two more examples, and I'll finish up. I believe in Hudson First and Main is a 25% TIF. And Van Aken, the Shaker Plaza where the theater used to be located, where the tenants moved to, school board's receiving 100% of the revenue on that side of the street, and that was a dining shopping center. However, with the new construction on the Van Aken Center, the school board, I believe, is receiving between 15% and 20% of the revenue.
You guys have any questions, any thoughts?
I have a long list of questions. The first one, I believe, is obvious, but the current tax revenue is $21,000, and you show tax revenue on the land value of $764,000 being basically 28K. The difference is that park at the tip of the triangle, is that exempt because it's a park? Is that why it's not generating any tax revenue?
Well, it is exempt, and that's, and as I mentioned, if development would occur, it would not be exempt any longer. Why it is exempt today?
Why is it exempt today?
Yes, because the city, we pay taxes on parking lots because the city, it's expected that the city's receiving revenue, so it's not completely exempt where cars are parking. That green space area is more of an open space, and so there's no revenue being generated by parking.
Okay, thank you. Next, I've got to go down this, I have a long list, and I can't quite see it all at the same time. Somewhere in your documentation, there was an acronym PILOTS. I assume that means payment in lieu of taxes, is that correct?
Correct.
If you're pumping $77 million into this property, how do you come up with a new value of $43 million?
So often the case...
That's not 35%, the standard real estate tax, at least not on my calculator, it wasn't. So I was trying to figure that one out.
That's a great question.
Yeah, it's a very good question. Oftentimes, with new construction, especially in urban settings and mixed-use that require structured parking, the cost does not equal the value. And really, it's a function of, the value's lower than the cost. So really, it's a function of our current market rents, the challenges of urban mixed-use redevelopment do not justify the private investment, meaning the debt and equity. So the whole reason we're here is because there's a gap between that cost and value. And again, we've shared our full financial models with the city, and I'm not sure what can be shared here, but I've also shared with David as counsel, that our cost, there's a big disconnect, and that's the financial gap that we're trying to solve for. We will actually not be able to solve for the gap with the proposal that's on the table. We still have some work to do with the city and other public partners that we've been working with and have met with and haven't met with yet, but we were hoping that they will support the project. That's exactly what we had to do with the Van Aken project. I didn't answer part of your question either. The 35% assessment percentage has no correlation to the value we've determined as an initial tax estimate. And we have not met with the county fiscal office to vet those numbers, but we will. So that's just something that has to happen that we're not ready to take on just yet.
Okay. So how do you come up with this estimated market value of $43 million?
We look at the net operating income that the project will generate, and we take three approaches. We look at comparable values and sales in the market. So that's taking projects that have sold, multifamily projects, mixed-use, and we find those comparables, we look at what those sold for, what they're assessed for. We then also look at what the net operating income is, and we take an approach that an appraiser would use, where they will take the capitalization rate, what an investor would pay for that stream of income and that income-producing property, and we add back the taxes, and we come up with a factor of the net income over that capitalization rate and the tax rate. And we come up with an approach that values that based on the tax rate and the cap rate, and an appraiser would say, okay, that's what the project would be worth. And then we also look at costs and replacement costs, and we look at those three approaches, and we come up with what we think is our best estimate. And we'd be happy to share our methodology with the board, the treasurer, and Mr. Seed.
And you're assuming that what percentage of the units sell, that what percentage of the retail is full, that the hotel is generating what sort of revenue? I mean, what happens if, you know, one of these things goes belly up? I mean, the hotel might not make money, and then your numbers are off. What happens then?
That's a market risk that you take with any project. We assume stabilized rates, meaning, for instance, a multifamily project would be 95% full, because that correlates with what the market is today. And that hotel would be in year three of operating, and would be relatively full, around a 72% occupancy. And that a commercial property might be in the 85% to 90% range, which also correlates with market occupancy. Flaherty &amp; Collins isn't going to take this on if they don't comfortable, along with their equity partners and debt partners, that they can get to these values. And the way we structure this as a percentage is that if the value goes up, we share both in the revenues, but if it goes down, we share in revenues, the lower revenues as well. So we're not, we're not proposing a structure that would have a ceiling, if you will, or a floor.
Molly, mind if I jump in since we've got some things...
Please, while I poke around.
Thank you. So some of my questions dovetail nicely off of the beginning that Malia has provided I look at this with a little bit of skepticism, to be honest. And my skepticism is based on a concern about occupancy. I look at this location that I am very, very familiar with, and at, right at the bottom of the hill, there is the wonderful, beautiful development that was actually referenced briefly, the One University Circle, which is going to be bringing in, I think, 280 what appear to be roughly similar units, higher-end luxury living. We have 200 units that you're talking about bringing in. We have the entire Uptown Development, which is very, very recent and is similarly upscale. And so we have all of this additional rental inventory at what appears to be roughly the same price point, entering the market over about the same five-year period. I think One University Circle is scheduled to begin... Entering the market over about the same five-year period. I think One University Circle is scheduled to, to begin occupancy in May. Perhaps before. So I look at that. And I just begin to challenge the viability. I know that, just, just how much of that market there is, and are we are those three developments in particular, can we sustain all three? And, and as we're looking at, at assumptions based on ninety-five percent occupancy, I just say, wow, you are an optimist. And, and, and I hope that's, that's great. But then I also look at the trickle-off. As I looked at this in particular, and again, being reasonably familiar with the neighborhood. In this picture, I counted over thirty apartment buildings that currently exist, many of which are owned by local Cleveland Heights residents. And as I begin to play this out, I wonder the impact that this could have on them. And their investments in the community as well. So I'm worried about empty apartments in this top of the hill, based on competition at the same price point. I'm also worried about sort of our community robbing Paul to pay Peter, if you will, for apartment renters. And the impact that it will have on these long-term investors in our, in our community. So I guess I've given you a lot to respond to, and I'll just sort of open it up and, and, you know, listen to what you have to say.
Very fair questions. The first one with respect to, let's just say, supply in the area. I would say is there's probably not as much supply as there should be, as you see in comparable cities. Cleveland undoubtedly is behind in the amount of luxury apartments that have come on compared to other cities. One University Circle will, will be great, and we think we'll be in line with it. The Uptown, from my vantage point, and maybe I haven't studied it close enough, is much more of a Case Western student housing development. That's by and large who's there. Beyond that, you don't have, what we get are renters by choice, easily can buy a home. In fact, our average resident has an annual salary of over a hundred thousand a year. So there are, there are, there's not a lot of competition for that outside of downtown Cleveland, quite frankly. And even downtown Cleveland, like I said, is, 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 is behind the, its peer cities in the amount of supply coming on. So it's happening across the country in every city. It's actually happening less here so far than you can see, see elsewhere. And I think that's a function of the, the cost to develop here is a little bit higher. And the ability to attract capital to the market is a little more difficult. So that, that's why.
May I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
So these apartments are intended to be rented, not sold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's important.
So I think that, that there's, we believe, and we're going to be putting our, our money where our mouth is, that, that there's certainly the, the, the demand for it. And we're also doing that because we're seeing it across the country. There, there, there's nothing unique about what we're doing here. And I, as to kind of the, the existing apartments. Again, I don't know them as well as you do, and I can't speak to all thirty. I don't want to paint with a broad brush. But I would say they're not the renters by choice. They're not the ones who currently have an annual salary of over a hundred thousand dollars who are looking for an urban apartment. And, and I say this to people, and it's not braggadocio thing, but these aren't apartment, these are resorts. What they have become, they are resorts. It's what people want. And if they're not, they're not going to get it here, they're going to move somewhere where they can. Again, whether it's the, the people out of the millennials out of school and the young professionals or the empty nesters who want to downsize, but still be in the heart of everything. They're not, I, I, again, I hate to paint with a broad brush. I suspect they're not going to the thirty proper, many, there's, there's probably some exceptions, certainly. But I think that's why, you know, kind of what's, a, a rising tide lifts all ships. You know, we come in and establish a higher rent than it's getting now. It quite frankly allows them to, to perform better. And kind of the, the, you know, make, anytime you make an eighty-million-dollar investment, you know, that's only going to help the properties around it and kind of create that vibrancy and make it even, I mean, look, we're attracted as this is an awesome site. People want to be here. We want to be here. But we think we're only going to make that more so with our development. So we, generally what we see is, and we did this in Indianapolis. We had, we had a property downtown that, when I said was the first of its type in Indiana. We went right across the street with the other development that I said had three-hundred-and-fifty units, almost twice as much. Property across the street rose, or increased the rents that it was getting the first year of the, its competition was opened because it just, it drew more people to the area. So hopefully that, that helped answer, but if I didn't, or you want to?
No, I, I just want to, I would encourage you to take a more thorough look at Uptown. These are, it is
Oh, I know it's nice.
For great students. I mean, but you're looking at two-bedroom suites for seventeen-seventy-five to twenty-two-sixty.
Yeah.
So I think it's the same
I don't disagree, but having toured the Flirney and Collins properties, I will tell you that there's nothing, even in Flats East, there's nothing in our market. Nowhere in our market.
What about that development on Chagrin that is not full? I mean, the Mobius Strip one, whatever it's called.
Again, the, it's, it's a different, it's one thing to put a new apartment building, right? So any new building is going to have new amenities. It's going to be shinier. It's going to look better than the property that exists. The amenities aren't there. It's a, it's a different, it's sort of apples to oranges, and, and you just saw some pictures flash across the screen for Flirney and Collins projects. So you didn't, you don't have an opportunity to understand that, you know, we toured some of their properties firsthand to see what they're offering. And we toured some, frankly, some properties in, in our area by a competing developer that does a really high quality, well, is amenitized a word?
I use it, I guess now.
With nice amenities.
Being in school, I'm a little hesitant. It's a word I use.
Well-amenitized, uh, uh, properties that, that still I, I don't think offer the level of amenities that you'd see in a Flirney and Collins project. And, and one of the reasons we selected them was not just for that quality and what they'll offer that's new in our market space. But also the, the catalytic effect that it had, they had everywhere that they went. That new development followed along. Whether it was office building, you had that in a few instances, other residential improvements that happened along the way. And the other reason we selected them was how well they work together with cities in, in helping to, you know, facilitate the community input and address all of those issues so that the project is, is malleable along the way. So those were really a lot of the top reasons we chose Flirney and Collins, and it's, it doesn't come across in this kind of a presentation. And I, and I think your concerns are very warranted, Dan. I don't, don't think that we haven't asked those same questions and council members and community members. I want to point out, though, as we talk about the TIF package. It, it's not a, the school receives twenty-one thousand today. If the project fails, you'll receive twenty-one thousand. If it's highly successful, yours, or even modestly successful, you receive four-twenty-one. So there's an upside, and, and they're, and they're sharing on both the upside. So I, I, I want to make sure that we don't get too far away from, you're not betting on the project. City's betting on the project small, slightly. The developer's certainly taking the bet.
And not only us, that, and I don't, sorry to interrupt, but the, the, both our construction lender and then the, the external equity that we have to raise for this. You know, especially in today's environment where, where things have tightened, right? They're going to be taking a critical look at this. And if, if, if they don't think that it's going to be successful, we won't have the ability to raise money. Now, that's not going to happen because anyone that comes here has, anyone that will is going to say, this is a home run. This is a great site. So I, for whatever it's worth, they'll also have a critical lens that they're viewing it from. We'll have personal guarantee. I mean, if it doesn't work, our CEO won't have a home. I mean, he, his, his butt's on the line, so.
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of things that we as a school board need to evaluate here. I mean, and I think one of the things you're sort of getting, you're drilling down to is risk. You know, really, what is our risk? I mean, we're not the ones that are pointing up the, the
Indeed.
Yeah, the eighty million dollars to, to make this project to go, or giving up the property to do this. Or it's really not our position to really question the fact that if we plug, if we see someone, a bank, stand up behind these guys and gals and put eighty million into the, into our city, what does that do to the surrounding part? So I guess with, with the risk issue, where I would like to see some, some clarity is, okay, so let's say that the project doesn't go so well. I mean, it's not going to be boarded up, okay? But really, what is our risk if it doesn't do so well? You know, let's say that they can't make the debt payments. You know, where does that, where does that, you know, where do we fit into that? And then if it's like a raging success, you know, what is that scale? And this is not something that I think it's appropriate for you to share with us now because we're just, we're starting to have this conversation we're throwing at you. But, you know, I'd like to know sort of what, what the risk profile is. And I think that's sort of what you're, what, what you're getting at. I mean, what does it mean to us if you can't be at the occupancy rates?
Right. I mean, for me, you look out that window. Understand? I mean, this is very present to me. Because while I wasn't here, I would be willing to bet that there were some very optimistic people in this room a number of years ago. And so I just, I have to keep that present. And, and I wish nothing but the best. But I have that in my mind.
So from the perspective of University Heights, it's a sad story. From the perspective of the school board, it's a home run.
Absolutely.
And with a home run, and then there's an opportunity for a follow-through right now, which is what we're seeing. The new mayor of University Heights, you know, rolling up his sleeves and trying to make some hay out of that, which is going to, which is going to benefit us. This is not the kind of deal where I think we could collect all our money upfront, okay, with no risk. We, we get that, okay? And but I think it's how the deal is. It's, it's really about, you know, what's fair, what is our risk, and what's realistic? I mean, there's a reason why when you throw a number like twenty-five percent at us, it's because you can do the deal at seventy-five. So it's like, why should we share anything more than that? Because you don't need us for that. And I get that. But I think when we're looking at this, it's like, what's fair, what is the risk profile, and then again, what is realistic for us?
Could I speak then, Tanisha and Tim, you can interject, you're probably more involved in this. But what we presented to you technically, to, to the, the gap that currently exists of the project would require a hundred percent of the, not only a hundred percent, a hundred percent of all the revenue going towards it, plus us all rolling up our sleeves and figuring out how to get it over the finish line. But we know that doesn't fly. There's, there's no value in doing that. So what we tried to present was, hey, what's, what's something that still is, 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 is a, is a big game for the school board and is, is consistent with, with other similar projects, how they got done? And then, and that, you know, we still are going to have to figure out a lot, and even more than we would have. But we tried to present something, start off it like, hey, this, this seems to be something that could work, and it's based on some precedent. But we still got a lot to figure out to, to get it over the finish line. So I just wanted to make sure, that's, that's kind of how it, it appeared as, that's how this deal got structured when we were trying to figure out the best, kind of present with our best, best.
Best foot forward.
Best foot forward, yeah.
And, and I don't want that to get lost on you, all the, our council, Tim and I had a great conversation with our council when we presented with this to them a few weeks ago. And, and a few council members were taken aback that we still have a gap. Right? So we didn't come to you with a hundred percent no-school compensation, which is, you know, the, the deal could take all of that, and we still have a little bit of gap left. It wouldn't make sense. We know that there should be, there should be some compensation to the schools. And you mentioned earlier about there being negotiations. I wouldn't call them negotiations, but we got some great input from your staff about how to, to structure something that could be attractive. It could be helpful for the school. And so that's what we wanted to present. We still have a lot of work to do to get the financial stack where it needs to be and close the gap between, you know, all of the sources they've lined up. The TIF, should you approve it, still doesn't get us to the finish line. And so we still have some work to do there. So there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of discussion, I'm sure, that, that needs to be had with us, and we're happy to answer those questions. And I'm sure David and Scott will be helping you along as well. But there's, there's a lot of work to be done, but we're excited that we still have an excited and engaged partner. This is not the easiest market to do these kind of projects in, which is why we're not bursting at the seams with them. But we deserve one in Cleveland Heights, and I don't think any of you would disagree with that. We deserve this. And I think it will be an incredible shot in the arm for our community in a way to demonstrate that we can do these kinds of projects and attract more in the future, which is what our goals are.
Yeah, and I would just say, to echo your comments, we wanted to come forward with something, it's, it's reasonable. It's what other communities, it's, it's a fairly not routine, but a consistent approach to this, but fair and reasonable. You know, this, I think Darren, I'm, I'm sure would agree, you know, and I would say, Dan, certainly this, this site is special in a way that as, as our gateway to our community. But it's already part of a, of a successful area. We, we feel that, that's kind of the other side, that, that will help elevate, as this development elevates the, the great commercial district we have in Cedar Fairmont. It's going to, it's going to elevate, be elevated by it. So the two, I think, work where that might not be the case in other, in other developments. And I would just add too, I, you know, I live in the area and, and I would, it's a different market that these folks are, are trying to
Tim lives in one of those apartments. He'd probably swap if he could, right?
I'm still, I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around the need for a TIF. Top of the Hill is the most valuable land in Cleveland Heights, by far. And I, I'm not seeing, where's the gap from? Why, why do we need a TIF in order to make this happen so that everybody's numbers work? It just seems to me like something's missing, and I'm not, I don't see it.
You need to invest significantly more to build the project than the project will be worth once it's complete. That's, that's sort of the, the basic premise for our market. If it, if it will cost seventy-five to eighty million to build, and it's going to be worth forty-three million in the end, that, that, and that kind of shows you the discrepancy there. It's our market. They can't come in and build build a product and rent it for the rents that you get in California or New York or Chicago. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't rent in our market. And so they have to be competitive. So you can't get the rents and, and the, the net profits that you need. So that's sort of the basic premise, and I'm sure Ryan could give them more.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if, if anyone here has been to the Nine, or Hynans, or Flats East, or, you know, One University Circle soon to be open, or Uptown, or list keeps going on and on.
Hyncrest and Orange.
Hyncrest. So see, this is some of the best real estate in, in northeast Ohio. Crocker Park. You know, every single one of those projects needed a TIF, and a lot more. And, you know, I was fortunate enough to work on a lot of those, often with David. And it has, it, you have to move mountains to get these projects done, even on the best real estate in Cleveland. And all I could say is that it's a lot, it's hard work, but we have a very sophisticated and hard-working professional you know, resources here and people. And Darren, we were with the Port Authority earlier today, and everyone knows how to do this stuff now, but it's hard work, and all these projects need this type of support.
And one thing I would add, and Tanisha and Tim can expound on it, because I wasn't kind of behind the, the scenes there with them. But they did put this out for, for RFQ slash RFP, and got responses from, from a number of developers. I'm, I'm pretty sure all of which indicated, I know our partner presented, didn't win it, and they needed a lot more than what we're saying that we can get this done with. So you did have that competitive tension, if you will, that if it could get done without it or for less, there was the opportunity for someone to come in to do it. And Cleveland's not unique, and I say Cleveland, the, the market, you know, all, all through the Midwest, except Chicago. the Midwest, except Chicago, uh, and maybe Minneapolis, that, you know, you just don't get the rents to, to, to support the cost to, to do a project like this. And trust, my life would be easier if, if, you know, we could just come in, buy the land, and, and go about our business. But it, you just, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to move to the coast if I wanted to do that sort of real estate.
Okay, so we have a, an expert representing us, you know, David, who does this, and I think it would be appropriate at some time, um, I mean, so our laundry list of questions is, okay, so, help us as a board better understand that this is, that this is necessary. And not asking you to do anything now, but, I mean, I think we need to, we need some understanding on that. And I'm also gonna throw it out there that, you know, this is not a tax abatement. You know, there's a very big difference. Um, I think it would be helpful to, um, you know, present to us, um, and really what the differences are between those two things.
I'm going to do that, and we can, we'll discuss some opportunities where that will take place. I've already have had discussions with Ryan, trying to get some information, which he's shared with me. And one of the scenarios I'm gonna be asking them about, and Ryan already knows this coming, you know, to explain, um, the developer for the site that's been vacant for fifty years, is, has to get a return on their equity and their investment. And to explain, you know, they might be getting a, what they're getting, what they're getting out of this project, because they have investors, they can't do this to not, to, to not make any profit.
No, of course not.
And my job, Scott's job, superintendent's job, make sure that, and your job, making sure that you all are getting a fair deal, um, additional gain of revenue, because you are being asked to forego three of, three of every four dollars. And so those are the questions that we'll be asking in the coming weeks. I think the city, and they can talk about it as they've worked with the developer, has probably been looking at the pro formas that have been presented to them, to make sure that, um, the developer's fee is appropriate, if there is one, that the return on equity, that, and they'll be able to explain some of that information. The return on equity is what's appropriate, it may not be what's desired, ideal for the developer, but it's what, like Ryan will say, what, what they, the minimum of what they, what's needed to secure a developer in this market.
And if I could add, um, we, we are presenting a very exciting, optimistic picture tonight, but I don't want anyone to think that the city hasn't been keenly focused on the worst-case scenario as well, in trying to balance that out. And so we've also been a partner with you before this even got to you, where we've hired our own outside consultant, meaning, it's, it's normal for the city to work with the developer, bring a TIF proposal to a school board. Um, we took an, an additional step, and we wanted to vet independently the proposal before it came to you, so that we were comfortable with it as well, that it was reasonable, that the assumptions were reasonable. Uh, and so we did take that step, and we have our own consultant, um, that's working with us, uh, to check reasonable is. The other thing that we've done to try and shore up our risk a little bit is, you have this outside your window, I've got severance outside my window.
Same thing.
So, we, you know, for us, it was important, one of, one of the things that's been very difficult is, as a city, where the community looks to us for leadership and to move that project along, and not having a seat at that table to do so. Uh, so we're on the outside looking in, trying to use the tools we have to influence it, um, but it's a lot more difficult when you're not sitting at the table. Uh, and so one of the things that Flaherty and Collins agree to, which is not typical in most of their deals, is a ground lease. Uh, so we're not selling this land to them. There's a ground lease, uh, we've got some, some mechanisms built into the development agreement that at least gives us a table, a seat at the table, should everything go wrong. It's always, you know, it's, it's like getting married and talking about the prenup at the same time. No one wants to have that conversation, you don't wanna think about the end, or, or that the thing will blow up, because we're all focused on making it work. Uh, but we wanted to have some protections in there, and, and, and that's one of the, one of the other reasons it took us a while to get to this point. We've been negotiating, um, those, uh, those protections on, on their side and our side. So we, we've had that in mind. It's not just rosy colored glasses on, uh, at the cities.
And I hope Tanisha will take this as a compliment, but the, the city has preserved a, a bigger seat at this table than, than any other deal we've worked on. Um, and we understand because of severance, and, and maybe this project led, led to that as well. And it, it, yeah, it wasn't like that didn't cause some problems or hurdles throughout the process as well. But at the end of the day, we, we got it in a spot where, where we all think we can live with it and, 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 and have a successful project, so.
Can you walk us through the timeline of changes? Because, you know, all right, today we're receiving twenty-one thousand dollars in real estate taxes. Once the TIF begins, that's thirty years, but there's also the two years of construction during which the new value hasn't been realized yet, it isn't there, because it's being built. So what happens during those different timeframes?
Brian?
So, this type of TIF, um, is enacted by ordinance, and this is, is known as, a lot of people call it a private TIF, and it's under Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.41, which basically, um, that thirty-year window starts when that ordinance is enacted. And that would be enacted before financing and construction would start, or financing would close, probably very soon, right before that. And then, um, you'll have some interim value based on construction progress. So, for example, forty million dollars might come on, um, i- i- in year one, and it would be, um, it would be, um, certified and paid in year two, and the, the, the full project, if it's a two-year project, might not show up until year three or four. So, we're looking at a TIF schedule where the value ramps up, if you will, based on construction.
Okay. And therefore, the tax value goes up accordingly, and the payments would also go up accordingly?
Exactly.
Ramp up? Okay.
So the TIF itself adds value to the land? Just...
The land, think of it as a base value that never erodes, and the TIF is only that increment, and it would ramp up based on construction progress and value, it's how the county would see it being valued. So yes.
Does the county use its usual three-year cycle, or does something happen that's different with a project like this?
A TIF should have no impact on how the project is valued. Um, it is taxed as if it is, um, any, any parcel or building. Um, so the TIF, uh, the, the developer sponsor here is not gonna pay any more taxes than they otherwise would if it were any parcel in the county.
What happens after year thirty?
It would revert, the exemption would, uh...
We won't still be here then, but I'm just...
Understood.
We're gonna be here, but not at this table, just to say.
Yeah, okay. Fingers crossed I'll go to the gym. Okay.
And I have a question that, you know, we're asking for a thirty-year TIF, and I have a kind of a two-part question. So the first part would be, um, what kind of studies have you done to understand that this is a thirty, a project with a thirty-year viability? And then my other question would be, supposing things go incredibly well, you know, you've painted an optimistic picture, is there an opportunity to terminate that TIF ahead of that thirty-year schedule? Those would be two questions.
I'll answer the first on the, the timeline. I mean, we, our history indicates that, um, that, that it is a, uh, well over thirty years, and we're talking a hundred years, a project like this should be viable if it's constructed well, and we certainly intend and will do that, and the numbers reflect a, a well-constructed project. Uh, the, you know, if, if we were to get, you know, certain financing, um, mechanism, have a forty-year term, just to give you a sense, and, and the idea is that gets refi- you know, that, that, that doesn't take you to the end of the term of the building, that's just kind of the, as long as you're gonna get. So, um, there is, the, 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 the project will be standing for, you know, barring kind of natural disaster causes, whatever, you know, for, for decades and decades.
What's your oldest project? How long has it been standing?
Twenty-five year, well, it probably took a couple of years to build, it took twenty-three years, and that, and that was a admittedly, probably, um, uh, lower-quality apartment complex, somewhere, you know, garden-style apartment, you know, multiple buildings, two stories, um, uh, that wouldn't have the masonry that this would have.
And can you talk a little bit about how you market your projects in order to get that occupancy rate up?
Um, great question. Uh, we, we have a, you know, a marketing staff at our company that's probably, you know, five or six deep. We property, so, our company doesn't only manage for ourselves, we, but we're probably manage more for third-party owners, developers, we do ourselves. So, we are entrusted by them to, to market their properties and get them full and, and whatnot. So, um, I, I don't know all the different things they do, certainly in today's world, social media, and, uh, you know, website, uh, uh, marketing is, i- i- is a big component of it. Uh, we generally start six months out before expecting people, and we'll set up a, some sort of, if there, if there's, there's, uh, area within the already constructed part to kind of set up a model and, um, uh, whatnot. We, we also are, are looking at technology where you can put on those, um, put on the glasses or whatever, and it already...
Virtual reality.
Virtual reality, and, and kind of see what your unit looks like. So, um, we, we, we spend a lot on marketing because, because we need to. And quite frankly, when we, when people see our properties, that's, we can't do anything better than what it is when they come and, and, and walk it, so.
Okay, and you said your target market is empty nesters and millennials. Are you looking to draw from our existing area, or are you thinking people would relocate here for this?
Yeah, great question. When I say target market, I mean, we, we probably target because of what our, our, our data tells us, because we, we, we've done so many of these projects. What we see, and again, we'll, we'll grant to, to anyone, but what we see is, you know, I used to say about, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of your young professionals and twenty percent empty nesters, but that's, those empty nesters are, are really kind of increasing, um, in, in, in the amount, or, in, in what we see of our, our demographics. What we also see is generally, our residents come from three buckets, and it's pretty evenly distributed. A third of the residents will already live in, in the city, in this case, Cleveland Heights, and they just, they just choose to live here. The other third live in the region somewhere, but outside of the city in which we're in. And then another third is brand-new to the, uh, to the region. So, it's, it's generally those, those three buckets are pretty evenly distributed generally with our projects.
Okay, and then you mentioned that, um, part of the project is, would, could potentially be townhomes if that fits onto the site. Would you think that that would be the same kind of target market, the empty nesters and the millennials, or do you think there is opportunity to have families with children that might be interested in that?
Those would likely, though, those could be families, they'll be larger units, and our local partner would be the one who, who handles townhomes. They've done, they've done a, a few of these throughout the region. Um, but I think it's, it's probably more likely that you would have kind of school-aged children there than you would in, in, in the apartments. I would still say, I'd still say it's unlikely, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the, the local partner, um, worked on the McKinley Place project, that, that the superintendent and I, you know, did you get a chance to tour it? I don't know if you got a chance to tour it, but, um, that was a school building that was demolished, uh, partnership with the city of Lakewood. Um, I, I wanna say there are very little, if any, uh, school-aged children living in tho- in those, uh, townhomes. They, they attracted mostly empty nesters, I think, from, from Lakewood. It's a much smaller project, though.
Yeah, okay.
Are you looking at the townhomes being rental properties as well?
No, those would, would be for sale.
Sale, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask, um...
Thank you.
Um, Tanisha, in your, um, due diligence, did you, um, go back, and, you know, a number of TIFs have been given over the years, um, to, um, these good folks? Did you look at projected versus actual, um, in terms of the impacts? You know, so, so the, the projected, uh, benefit is, you know, about, what is it, four-hundred thousand, um, versus actual, say, five years in, as some of these older? And, and perhaps you guys can also speak to your record, just in terms of your ability to, to sort of look at the crystal ball and look down the road, and, and I'm sure that you do reevaluate your, you know, your suppositions going into these projects. So how is, how is your record, you know?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let, I'll let Darren talk about the record. Uh, one of the things that was important to the city was that the city was not in a position to backstop the TIF, so if it, if it didn't perform, um, it doesn't dip into our general fund revenue. Um, city of Shaker Heights is experiencing that with one of their, uh, projects from a little while ago. Um, that wasn't, we weren't in a position for that, and so it was important that the developer took whatever steps they needed to do to backstop the TIF, if it was a personal guarantee, um, if they monetized it some other way, but the city, uh, will not have to go into the city's coffers to do that if for some reason it doesn't perform. I don't know if you have any history of that at all, Darren, but...
I don't think this is gonna answer your question, but the, the data that we have is, uh, and it may speak more, more to us as developers, but, but our property taxes are generally more than what we projected, and I, and I think it's just because things are, you know, that they end up doing better than we project. So, I don't know about kind of as a TIF analysis, or a TIF district, I should say, analysis, but from our standpoint, I, I think we've honed in better now than, than we had been, but, but generally the taxes are, uh, are higher than what we would've assumed going into it.
And I think, um, David would agree, and just to be completely candid, we, we have a lot of, we've looked back and see how TIFs perform, and it's everything from, unfortunately, projects like across the street or behind you, to projects that are, you know, very successful and well above what's needed for bond debt service and paying back, you know, debt and equity. So, it's, it's really, um, project-specific, and, um, often follows the economic cycles.
I would think, um, Ryan also, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, a lot of the analysis was done on a forty-three million, uh, base, um, uh, not looking at, uh, obviously the value of the, of the development and any increases in value. I would, I would imagine we would see it increase over time.
Um, yes, but it's something that we don't want to over-promise or underwrite, because that will set us up to fail. So we wanna be very careful.
Yeah, the flip side, we're, we're kind of conservative. We're looking at it, at that, as if it will not increase.
Well, also, the, you know, your lenders don't allow you to, to assume that, right? They, they take a steady, and probably in this case, more importantly, bondholders, when they're evaluating the TIF bond, they, they don't assume the increase, because usually it does increase in a couple percent, but the problem is, even though it may increase eight years at one to two percent, if they have a, a, two years where it goes down ten percent, then it's negated at all. So, um, it, it's pretty standard, and I, trust me, I've tried, but if you look at it like this, it, you know, you can give us more money, but they just don't, uh, they don't bite.
Okay, so I, I have a couple of comments to share, but have you guys kind of, do you have a couple more thoughts?
I wanna make sure I understood Tanisha correctly. You said that the city won't assume responsibility for these service payments, so there's no risk to the city should say the cost of debt service change over the course of the project?
Right, it's on the...
So that's, it's on the developer?
It's on the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Or bondholders. I mean, if bondholders take that risk, and we hope they do, but we're not counting on it, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, so I have, I have two things. First of all, um, I, I wanna share the, the thoughts that we're looking for sort of a fair, reasonable, and obviously we want something risk-free, but we wanna understand the risks involved. So that's why, um, you, you've heard us tonight, um, you know, ask some hard questions. But I don't wanna eclipse the fact that, currently today, we have a parcel that we are enjoying twenty-one thousand dollars' worth of revenue annually, um, and that's going to good use, helping our kids. So, someone is willing to put, you know, seventy-five to eighty million dollars into this parcel, and now give us four hundred approximately dollars that we can spend toward our kids.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, is that four hundred million?
No.
Four hundred thousand, thank you. Um, so, I mean, that, that to me sounds like the team that is bringing this to us. I mean, I, I wanna find a way to be part of that team, uh, and, you know, work with you guys. I mean, when you look at this whole situation, this could be a win-win for everybody. We still have to be very careful with the risks and the realism, which is what you guys have brought up, which I'm hopeful David and our staff could help clarify for us. So that so brings us to what the next steps are. And I, I wanna bring one other issue here, and I, you know, sort of the sense of urgency. You know, I don't wanna rush through this, but I don't think we should del- You know, I don't wanna rush through this, but I don't think we should delay. Um, I mean, I wanna make it so that the cities that we're a part of, Cleveland Heights and University Heights, were not an obstacle in getting projects done. Again, we need to look at the risk, we need to look at the opportunity, and we need to balance all this. But I wanna make sure that when other developers, you know, come to this city, they wanna realize how easy it is to do business with us. And I'm not talking about giving away the farm, we can't do that in order to get this, I wanna reiterate that. We need to do it carefully, but we can act quickly, and I wanna make sure that we're doing so. So with that in mind, can you guys sort of, you know, come up with us and just, you know, make sure that, you know, I mean, whatever you can do, you know, we will be available to help get this thing done quickly? We still have some hard questions that need to get answered, but let's, let's figure that out.
No, absolutely, and I, I would like to just mention as well that I feel like, and I'll, I'll speak for the superintendent too here. And that, um, in the, in the past, uh, you know, one of the frustrations with the district or of the district has been that these, these kind of proposals have happened, and, you know, it's brought to the board. And it's, it's, it's more or less in its final form, and so really, if there's anything that the district is gonna get, we really have to do, do a lot of that negotiating to try to get something, and at that point, it's a little more difficult to do. So, um, I think we've been pleased that, you know, from the beginning, that the city has, you know, they've invited us to the table, and that we did have some conversation. They accepted all of our input in terms of, you know, David provided examples of school-friendly TIFs and some of these things that you see in other, um, o- other TIFs that he's worked with and that he's seen. And, you know, even the, the point that future levies, once, once this is wholly developed, will be a hundred percent, um, of revenue to the district. You know, that's something that we, we, we came back with, you know, early on in, in one of the conversations, and the city was very uh, much willing to put that back in, you know, it, it was just, it was just a matter of having those conversations. So, I, I just feel like, it, you know, in the past, i- it's been a more difficult proposition, and, and with the team that we have right now, um, there's been a lot of good conversation. And, and they have really, I think, tried to put the best foot forward and really say, this is, you know, this is what we think we can do, and, and, uh, you know, I think we've been pleased with that. So, thank you for that.
Well, I think that's it. So I think we've got a lot of good information, some, some, some good things to chew on. Um, I think we're ready to adjourn.
And we're relaxed.
Rory, do I have a motion?
I motion we adjourn.
Second. And again, I appreciate you, I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you guys.
What's the closest property you have that maybe we could go visit if it's anywhere near here?
Yeah, um.
Or on our own.
Is Cincinnati or Indianapolis close, or Chicago even?
Where is the Chicago when you said a suburb?
Suburb of Orland Park.
I think it's in the, in the packet, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a picture on the packet, and there it was, it was a city who, uh, great retail, but it, you know, no one really lived there, or they didn't have any kind of nice housing, um, other than the single-family homes. So they, 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 and I think it's been the only project on the south, southwestern suburbs of Chicago to, to happen like this, so. So that one, that one might be the closest, but we, we got more in Indianapolis that we would love to show you, where you could probably, if you didn't mind coming down, seeing, you know, three of them.
Or we'll do the virtual reality glasses.
Yeah.
We gotta call the roll.
I wish we had something somewhere warm, I could tell you, you know, let's go to Miami and check out some done airbase, yeah.
Yeah, probably that oldy property in Cincinnati. And if you go there, eat at the sleepy B, just saying.
Okay.
You need to go.
Yeah, Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serena?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.